Hello? Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay.
Just trying to get everything set. I'm glad we got started early to make sure that our video works.
Sounds like it's so good.
Can you hear me, Lisa?
Yes, I can.
You know, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Kittle. Did you have something to add?
I haven't. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kittle, did you have something to add?
Yeah, there was one, one little correction on five in that first paragraph. Paragraph five lines up. It starts off to say, "He stated he doesn't think." And it should actually say, "Councilman Richards stated." You would get the impression that that was Kennedy talking. Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Councilmember Kittle. Did anyone else have anything to add for the minutes from May 26, 2020? We'll move the minutes as amended.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to the approval of the bills this evening. Councilmember Walton?
I'll make the motion to approve the bills this evening.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda this evening.
I'll move the agenda.
A second.
Councilmember, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Please raise your hand if you have a video. Also, please remember to state your name and address. And also, please remember our two-minute time limit. At this time, if anyone would like to make a public comment, please let us know.
Mr. Mayor? I didn't see anyone raising their hand, and I have yet to see Councilman Richards join the meeting yet.
Okay. If, if for some reason he does not end up joining the meeting, I will contact him as soon and make sure everything's okay with him as soon as we're done here. Last call for public comment, please. Okay, at this time, we will close our public comment, and we'll move on to the discussion of downtown. And Paul, I'm going to let you go ahead and start us off.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to update council on a few items. The first one was the Oakland County REIT Open Toolkits. We did receive delivery of those, and as of right now, we have delivered or had picked up 37 of those kits. We received 96, so we are still getting calls, and they're still being referred to Oakland County. And then we get the names, and we do hand them out as well. Right now, we are waiting also the delivery of our downtown flower baskets and the flowers for the downtown. I'll update council when we get those, perhaps within my next manager's report. The patronicity campaign that we have for the matching donation for, through Oakland County, through the Main Street program. Right now, we are $905 short of reaching the $4,000 goal, so we have to the end of this week. So hopefully, we can still get that out. We've been trying to push that as much as possible. So if we get that $4,000 donated as part of that, we also get the matching $4,000 from Oakland County. And the last item is, is we worked out, we're working on the final details. I'm waiting for an email back from our potential new DDA director. We expect that the director would start by the 22nd of June. So I'll update you once I get that final okay and everything worked out. I'm happy to answer any questions that any council members may have.
Thank you, City Manager Zolling. Does anyone have anything for Paul this evening? Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Paul, just a couple of quick questions. Can you tell me where the flowers are coming from this year?
Donahue Farms, the same group that we got them last year. And last year, when we ordered the flowers, we also ordered baskets that we could reuse every year. So we're reusing the baskets that we did purchase from them last year.
Excellent. They were lovely last year, and I know they spent a lot of time teaching us how to take care of them properly. To Donahue, I really am happy with them. Secondly, in your manager's report, you stated that there's a hand sanitizer station in McCady Park along the rail trail, but I walked it, and I don't see it.
I got an email today and said that they were delivering it on Wednesday. You'll see it right by, it'll be located right by the sign as you come out of the parking lot as the entrance to the park, which is along the rail trail and along the sidewalk to the entrance to McCady Park.
Perfect. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we were following up on that. And, Mr. Mayor, just to let you know, I did send Councilmember Richards a text message. I have not heard back from him.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton, and I will be sure to follow up with him. Hopefully, he's just caught up in a nap or something. So, Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As to the downtown, Paul, could you give us a little update on the requests that have been made for outdoor dining? What the city has done to accommodate those requests?
Well, the city of South Line does have within its ordinance the cafe permit. So we're one of the few communities that actually had that for R1, R2, R3, so businesses can request those. We've had, I believe, four businesses within South Line that took those. Not just, not just South Line, or not just downtown South Line. I believe there are two still within the process, and we had conversations with another two just this week. In fact, today, that people inquired about adding the outside dining. So it is the cafe permit that does allow them to have their, move their dining to the outside. So this is not just in downtown, but throughout South Line. And if they do have a liquor license, they must get approval through the MLCC to allow that alcohol to be served in those locations. And that is filed through the LCC, and I was just on a webinar last year, last week, with the LCC and the permit individuals, and they are processing all those within a week.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
This is kind of loosely based in the downtown. The downside of the no truck turning on the four corners has resulted in all of these side streets that are off of 10 Mile and Pontiac Trail, taking an onslaught of full-size semi trucks turning on our residential streets. I just went out just before the meeting. Warren is 25 foot back a curb to back a curb. Washington is 42 foot. It seems like it would be who bus to try to, to stop them from getting into these narrow areas. I mean, they're tearing branches off of trees and things because they're just too tall, and the street is too narrow. So, you know, I come home and there's stuff laying in the ground almost every day. So I can't imagine that it's any different than any of these other streets. So I'd like to say at least investigate whether or not there's some way to manage where their alternative turning should be taking place. I know that, you know, some communities have where no commercial vehicles and all that kind of stuff. And I really don't, I'm not a big fan of over-regulating, but at the same time, to watch them go up over curbs and tear branches off of trees. When cars are parked on the street, it just seems like we're asking for some kind of an issue somewhere along the line. That's all I had. Thanks.
Anyone else have anything for Paul this evening? Councilmember Richards, is that you over there?
Yeah, I'm here. I couldn't get the Zoom number to go through, right, it seems like. But I finally got it, okay? Sorry, I'm about 10 minutes late. Are you on the budget?
We are on downtown discussion. Right after public comment number one.
Okay, I wanted to make a comment on the minutes of the last meeting, but you're past that, I guess.
Was it about you?
Something I said, yeah.
Yeah, that was accounted for.
Thank you.
I can't hear him. I can't hear what he said.
Glenn said, or Councilmember Kittle said that that was, that was brought up in our discussion about the minutes. So hopefully, hopefully.
Okay.
City Clerk Deaton, yeah, I just wanted to make sure you saw the minutes for when Councilmember Richards got in. If no one else has anything for City Managers, we will be moving on. Last call for that. Okay, great. Let's move on to the Fire Chief report with Chief Vogel.
Good evening. Just a couple of quick things. It was a stressful week last week. But we got through it. I was pretty proud of the city staff. We got through the tearing down of the buildings, the two protests, the farmers' market, the parks. I think it all went off without a hitch, and we had a recent incident today, and we didn't have any issues at all. There was an issue on Thursday when the glider hit the power lines, and we lost all the power again in the city. It seemed to be a trend where they're losing power up near Silver Lake and Pontiac Trail, and half the city loses power. The issue we're having is it's hitting some of our high-risk areas like Colonial Acres, and some of those residents are on oxygen, and they run out. And again, it happened that night. We were very busy. Busy weekend, actually, all around. We also, I want to remind all business owners to please feel free to reach out if you have any questions about opening in your occupancy. Me and Inspector Matthews have worked pretty hard to make sure that we have all the occupancies done. It just takes a phone call, and we can get you a new occupancy notice to put on your wall. And we just ask that you call this is Friday, 8 to 4. Here's a reminder, I think Paul will recover it later, but some of the city will be losing power again tomorrow. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Chief Vogel. Does anyone have anything for Chief tonight? All right, thanks, Chief, and thank you to your staff over there for, for a great week over there. Thank you. We'll move on to the Police Chief report, and Chief Sovik, go ahead.
Okay, last Friday evening, at Millennium and Centennial, we had the eighth-grade school kids graduating, so we did a drive-by with our lights. The parents were showing the appreciation for the eighth graders by driving through the bus loops, and we kind of got in there as well, along with them, to help congratulate them and celebrate that as well. That was at 6:00 and 7:00 o'clock on Friday. At 6:30, we had a Black Lives Matter movement. It started in the McCady Park. to stop them from getting into these narrow areas. I mean, they're tearing branches off of trees and things because they're just too tall and the street is too narrow. So, you know, I come home and there's stuff laying in the ground almost every day. So I can't imagine that it's any different than any of these other streets. So I'd like to say at least investigate whether or not there's some way to manage where their alternative turning should be taking place. I know that, you know, some communities have where no commercial vehicles and all that kind of stuff. And I really don't, I'm not a big fan of over-regulating, but at the same time, to watch them go up over curbs and tear branches off of trees. When cars are parked on the street, it just seems like we're asking for some kind of an issue somewhere along the line. That's all I had. Thanks.
Anyone else have anything for Paul this evening? Councilmember Richards, is that you over there?
Yeah, I'm here. I couldn't get the Zoom number to go through, right, seems like. But I finally got it, okay. Sorry, I'm about 10 minutes late. Are you on the budget? Wait a minute.
We are on downtown discussion. Right after public comment number one.
Okay, I wanted to make a comment on the minutes of the last meeting, but you're past that, I guess.
Was it about you?
Something I said, yeah.
Yeah, that was accounted for.
Thank you.
I can't hear him. I can't hear what he said.
Glenn said, or Councilmember Kibble said that that was, that was brought up in our discussion about the minutes. So hopefully.
Okay. Okay.
City Clerk Deaton, yeah, I just wanted to make sure you saw the minutes for when Councilmember Richards got in. If no one else has anything for City Managers, we will be moving on. Last call for that. Okay, great. Let's move on to the Fire Chief Report with Chief Vogel.
Good evening. Just a couple of quick things. It was a stressful week last week. But we got through it. I was pretty proud of the city staff. We got through the tearing down of the buildings, the two protests, the farmers market, the parks. I think it all went off without a hitch and we had a There was an issue on Thursday when the glider hit the power lines and we lost all the power again in the city. It seemed to be a trend where they're losing power up near Silver Lake and Pontiac Trail, and half the city loses power. The issue we're having is it's hitting some of our high-risk areas like Colonial Acres and some of those residents are on oxygen and they run out. And again, it happened that night. We were very busy. Busy weekend, actually, all around. We also, I want to remind all business owners to please feel free to reach out if you have any questions about opening in your occupancy. Me and Inspector Matthews have worked pretty hard to make sure that we have all the occupancies done. It just takes a phone call and we can get you a new occupancy notice to put on your wall. And we just ask if you can help this Friday, 8 to 4. Here's a reminder, I think Paul will cover it later, but some of the city will be losing power again tomorrow. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Chief Vogel. Does anyone have anything for Chief tonight? All right. Thanks, Chief, and thank you to your staff over there for, for a great week over there. Thank you. We'll move on to the Police Chief Report and Chief Sovik, go ahead.
Okay, last Friday evening, at Millennium and Centennial, we had the eighth grade school kids graduating. So we did a drive-by with our lights. The parents were showing the appreciation for the eighth graders by driving through the bus loops, and we kind of got in there as well, along with them to help congratulate them and celebrate that as well. That was at 6:00 and 7:00 o'clock on Friday. At 6:30, we had a Black Lives Matter movement. It started in the McCady Park. We had about 200 individuals. Things went well. It was very, very peaceful. We walked about two miles. We walked down to 9 Mile, crossed Pontiac Trail up to 10 Mile, then back into the park. No issues, no problems. About 200 people attended. Some of the parents, they were very happy that we were actually there walking with them to kind of keep themselves. A lot of youngsters in that group, and so that went well. Sunday, we had a Say Their Names protest or rally. That was Sunday at 2:00, and that was on the sidewalks on both sides of Pontiac Trail between 9 and 10 Mile. There were about 400 people that attended that and including our, about eight or 10 of our officers. There was eight minutes and 49 seconds worth of silence during that time, and everybody just kind of, just, just left peacefully. It was very well-attended. No issues, no problems. We had emergency plans with the South Line Fire Department and contingency plans. Things went well. We also had other agencies on standby should we need them, but everything went fine. Our portable speed radar sign is finally in after months, so we will be deploying that throughout the city at various times. So encourage people to, if there's an issue in a subdivision or on a certain street, we can go ahead and put it on a, on a, hang it on another sign. And we can take recordings from that. So that was good that it's finally in here. And also, we had a, two of our grants that we applied for to the MMRMA. Both of, we, both of them were awarded successfully to us. So we should be receiving the $17,000 and $17,400 among the two grants sometime within the next couple of weeks. And when we receive those checks, we will, I will forward them to a, make them formal during the next city council meeting. Other than that, it was, it was a good weekend. Lot of concern, lot of traction on some of these events on Facebook, but things, things went finally, couldn't have been a better turnout and everything. So that's about it.
Thank you, Chief Sovik. Councilmember Dilg, did you have something for Chief?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the chief. I can't tell you how many people I have heard from that thanked, that appreciate our police department and how you handled Friday especially, but on Sunday, hanging back and letting the, the rally happen, the moment of silence happen, but still being there as a presence to make people feel like, you know, everything was going to be safe. And we just, I just wanted to let you know how much everybody appreciates our police department for that.
Great. Appreciate that. Thank you.
And I saw Rob there too, Chief Vogel, and so we appreciated seeing him as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Dilg. Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to concur with Lisa. I also heard phenomenal comments about the professionalism of the South Line Police Department. I knew some people that attended that on Sunday. They were from outside of the area. They were extremely complimentary of the police department and also of the attendees that were there. They stayed focused on the message of the, of the message of the moment. And I think you had a real united front on Sunday that included police officers, law enforcement, and those that were there, you know, expressing their First Amendment emotions of some events. So thank you, Chris. Thank you to the department. I think you are a tremendous role model for other law enforcement, and that's why people choose to live here, is because we have a very compatible environment with our law enforcement and with our values. So thank you, Chris. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurzweil. Did anyone else have anything for Chief Sovik this evening? Okay, great. Thanks, Chief, and also please pass along a thank you from all of us and all their hard work over this past week as well. So thank you. At this time, we're going to move on to new business. New business number one. Purchase of a new XFP 100C explosion-proof submersible pump for the 9 Mile lift station.
Howdy, everybody. How you doing? Basically, this is for a lift station at 9 Mile. We had a recent pump failure out at 9 Miles Lift Station. We were able to replace the failed pump with one that we did have available on hand. There are two in all the lift stations. And the only option for this particular lift station is direct replacement, and this instance is would be through Detroit Pump. This expenditure can be purchased out of the equipment at Selenius account, 592.557/977, and all quotes are attached for your review.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the purchase of the new XFP 100C submersible pump for the lift station at 9 Mile, $5,112, underlying item 592.557-977.
Oh, we had, we had a tie there, so, okay. City Clerk Deaton, we have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Kibble. And as we've been doing in these Zooms, we will ask that we do a roll call vote, please.
Kurzweil?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Heltat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. We'll move on to new business number two this evening. Water Treatment Plant Improvements, Phase One.
As you all are very well aware, I'm sure, the project for the improvements to the water treatment plant has begun with bids being provided through Mitten. Upon reviewing the bid packages, the city's engineers have submitted a formal recommendation. This project will be funded through the next several budget years as referenced in the Gantt chart, which is enclosed.
Councilmember Kibble?
Well, it's good to see that it's finally up and running, so I just assume, go ahead and make the motion to approve the award for Phase One of the Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project to L. G. Henstini and Sons. Okay? For the amount of $3,314,000, $1,400 under the line item spoken to in the documents.
One second.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead. Okay. Councilmember Richards, let me come right over to you after Councilmember Kennedy. Go ahead, Councilmember Kennedy.
Okay, so this is just a couple of points, looking at the Gantt chart that was provided. I assume that HRC put this Gantt chart together. What I would request, and I've discussed this with our Superintendent of Utilities, I'd like to see a little more detail included in the Gantt chart than, than what's been provided. I had questions that the chart couldn't answer. You know, basically, looking at the ground storage tank, it shows construction taking place during the described period of time. Is that just solely construction, or is it putting it online, testing it, and all the rest of it? I assume that's all included. I'd like to see the detail included in future Gantt charts as well. Secondly, we had a discussion regarding the components involved in this project previously. And during that time, there was another project, the induced draft aerator, as well as the, the filter replacement and painting. The discussion led to the, the decision, more or less, that we were going to handle both of those projects in-house. Obviously, that's changed. We're now going to do the filters with HRC's oversight, and we're going to contract it out. And that's, you know, whatever the decision is, that's, that's great if there was reasoning behind it. The point is, I thought it was pretty well agreed that we were going to do that in-house. When we make a change in decision, I'd like it called out instead of just buried in a Gantt chart that hopefully somebody might notice. That was a conscious decision, bring that in and have HRC get involved with it. It should have been highlighted rather than just included in a Gantt chart that somebody may or may not notice. Just for future reference, would like that kind of transparency made, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment. We don't, none of us know any of these companies. There all must be very large companies to be able to, be able to bond to something like this for the performance. I was partial to one of the other construction companies, number four down, Wise Construction. Exactly why, I don't know, but completely, but being that as it may, I was surprised that this project is going to go on into the end of 2022. And also, when we write the checks for our payments for this whole project, which is, I fully approve of the project, okay? Do we write our checks to HRC, or do we write our checks and the money goes directly to Augustino or Augustini?
Oh, the contract, or do you want me to answer? Sorry.
Go ahead, Mike.
Oh, the contract is between the city and the Augustini, so that's who the checks would be written to for the construction.
Okay, then in other words, we'll be writing separate checks to HRC.
Correct.
For their, their part.
As we always do.
Okay, all right, just making it clear. This is probably the largest thing we'll ever, in our, in our total tenure on council, the largest amount of money we'll ever approve, you know, in anything that comes our way.
Is that all you had, Councilmember Richards?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about cutting you off. Councilmember Kurzweil, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe Mike Darga could answer this. On Gantt charts that I have seen, there has always been, whether or not it is an estimate or a firm quote. And so I just want to make sure that notation is not here. So I don't know that on the bid offer that's been accepted, it, does the Gantt chart represent a firm bid, or is there room for some adjustment? Because I don't have the underlying documents for that bid.
The Gantt chart that was provided is just based on the contract as we know it right now, the dates in the contract. Once the contractor is on board, they're going to submit a more detailed Gantt chart. So at that point, we'll have a lot more detail that we could share with you. I mean, are you?
That's exactly the point I was trying to make.
Okay.
So there may be some movement in that number.
In the days, or you're talking?
In the, in the, in the bid offers.
There shouldn't be.
Pardon?
There shouldn't be. I mean, they bid it based on this.
There will or will not. That's what I'm trying to find out.
There will not.
Okay, that's what I want. So this is a, this is a pretty firm bid in the Gantt, then. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, at this time, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurzweil. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to ask a question. I would like to get the justification for why we're not doing the medium in the horizontal filters. It seemed as though that was a given, that we had the capacity of technology and understanding to be able to pull that off without having oversight by HRC. And there, I mean, when you're talking about 20% step down, that's money, so... Is there a reason?
Did you want me to take that one?
I was hoping you would.
Yeah, absolutely. There's, the, 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 the horizontal filters are going to be outsourced. The company that's going to probably do this most likely is going to be Tonka. And whether or not it's actually Tonka's people showing up or not, I'm not privy to that information at this point. But I know for 100% fact, we should not be doing that. We, we will break things in there that we cannot repair. That, that I do know. I, I would not be comfortable with our water operators climbing around inside of a confined space, acting like they know how to replace these things when they don't. And I would just as soon go with a, a, a company, reputable company, that does nothing but horizontal pressure filters. These are under pressure. They have to be sealed properly. They have to be maintained. I mean, after, after they're on, online and everything's handed over to us, then I'm comfortable, obviously, keeping them in the condition we're going to get them in, so.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
No problem.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion for Doug or Mike from HRC? Okay, thank you. Lisa, let's go ahead and go with the roll call, please.
Hey, Dilg?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Heltat?
Yes.
Who am I missing?
Kurzweil.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Maggie.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Lisa. Motion passes. We move on to new business number three this evening. Nyhart GASB 75 Actuarial Services Agreement.
The city of South Line engages a firm to collect the data and prepare a comprehensive actuarial valuation report based upon the requirements of GASB 75 for fiscal years ending June 2020 and June 2021. I've attached a copy of the service agreement provided by Howard E. Nyhart Company Incorporated. And possible courses of action tonight is to approve or not approve the service agreement by Howard E. Nyhart Company Incorporated to provide the actual services to the city of South Line for 2020 and 2021. Our finance administrator and I are here to answer any questions that you may have regarding this agreement or provide any additional data.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I just assume, make the motion that we approve the service agreement with Howard Nyhart Company with, under the terms that are submitted by our package.
I support.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, Lisa, can we please move on to the roll call vote, please?
Kennedy?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Kurzweil?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Heltat?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Motion passes. We move on to new business number four this evening, Preparedness Plan.
Based upon the Governor's Executive Order 2077, we are required to prepare a Preparedness Response Plan and institute precautionary measures to practice good health practices and protocol for employees to return to work and for visitors to access municipal facilities. I've attached a copy of the Preparedness Response Plan tonight. The motion is to approve or not approve this response plan as presented. Myself and the city attorney are here to answer any questions you have regarding the plan or how this all came about.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the Preparedness and Response Plan as presented. Let me, let me resend that. Let me resend that motion, please. First off, we need to, on page two, we obviously took this as a template. It says, prior to entering any township building, the employees or contractor will be asked the following question. That needs to be changed to, prior to entering any city building. And then I'll make the motion to approve the Preparedness Response Plan as amended.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Just a moment. Councilmember Walton, I'm going to go over to the city attorney, city attorney Hamami. Please go ahead.
You are right, Councilmember Kennedy. This was a template, and I'll tell you, this is one that I drafted for one of my other communities, and I provided to the city to adapt to the city's needs. So that's probably how that was missed.
No problem whatsoever. No need to reinvent the wheel.
I do want to indicate to council that while this is as good as we could get it today, that I think everybody understands that this document should be considered a fluid document, and as executive orders change and come into place, then, you know, maybe, maybe... know, maybe, maybe Paul can have the authority to just make the changes. And I don't know that you have to make any formal action, but just be advised that there may be some changes as we go along with the state of emergency and the governor's executive orders. To that end, in the, um, on page seven, where we talk about sick employees returning to work under, uh, symptom-based, in the event of a suspected case, we have in here at least 14 days have passed following travel as one of the triggers when an employee can return to work. And I think, um, since this is, was drafted, she has loosened the restrictions so much that travel is permitted now, so I'm, I think it's time that we make that change now, and I would suggest we change it to the language in the CDC's guidance, which is at least 14 days have passed following travel to the areas of the world that have widespread ongoing transmission as identified by the CDC. That's all.
Thank you, City Attorney Hamami. Does anyone have anything else to ask the city attorney before I go to Councilmember Walton? Okay, great, Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
Under the symptoms section, I'd like to make a few changes if possible. Um, in healthcare, we screen everybody that comes into our hospital every day, and one of the very first questions that we ask is have you had close contact, or has anyone in your household, um, been diagnosed with COVID-19 in the last 14 days? And then in response to the rest of these, it should be new cough, new shortness of breath, new fever, new chills, um, new muscle pain, new sore throat, um, and also rash. Rash is a new, newer symptom that we are seeing a lot of, so I, I would like to highlight that that needs to be added to the list, but I think it's very important that we ask if they're new, because you have people that have these symptoms currently that are unrelated to COVID.
Sure, that's a good point.
Councilmember Walton, that's, uh, priceless feedback there, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, so we did have a motion, Councilmember Kennedy, um, what's wrong with Dilg, did you raise your hand to me?
Yeah, I just had one quick question.
Go ahead, sorry.
I, I meant to ask something to Lisa. Is there, do we need to have anything in here that says that, um, upon, you know, changes of executive order, that the city manager can make changes? Do we need to say something like that, or?
I, I think it should just be assumed, unless you want to add it to your motion, you're, you're welcome to, but I, I think that that's how everyone's handling it, seeing as though this is a state of emergency and it's not reasonable if a chain, you know, if the governor changes something, I think it's, I think it's just accepted.
Okay.
Councilmember Walton?
Sorry.
I saw Councilmember Kibble, who's not spoken yet, go ahead.
Well, I was just kind of curious, are there any other benchmarks that we, we should use as authorities driving some of the language that are in this document besides CDC?
Yes, we've used, um, a multitude of her executive orders, the CDC, OSHA, Department of Labor, that, I mean, that's what, my resources in, in this draft, this draft actually.
How many of them change, though, you know? I mean, are they as fluid as C, CDC would be?
See, Department of Labor, probably not, OSHA, probably not, because it's about coming back to work and safety. I think, I think that CDC and the executive orders are what's more fluid.
Okay, so we should be more mindful there, yeah, all right.
Thank you. Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
I'm so sorry, I just realized you had a section here about PPE, and I just want to, um, ask, are we providing the gloves, the protective eyewear, face shields, masks, and respirators?
Okay, employees?
In, in varying instances where they are needed, we would be, but not everybody around the city hall is going to be wearing masks, is going to be wearing gloves and that, but there are described in here times at which those employees wouldn't be wearing those things when they're coming in contact with individuals, or based upon the need with their particular job, based upon OSHA.
Okay, are we putting up a protective barrier, like a plexiglass wall or anything like that?
We always have, we already have those guards up, and we're finishing the markings and preparing all the signage, so when we do prepare to open up, we'll have all that prepared.
Excellent. One other thing that we do in healthcare is we do not allow outside gloves to come into the building. So I may, might make that suggestion that we ask that people remove their gloves and only use the ones that are provided by the city within the building so that we know they are fresh, we know that they haven't been traveled or used anywhere else.
One thing, one thing I would say also, Mr. Mayor, is that if there is anything that we feel that's of a substantive nature that I feel that council should be aware of, or should be involved in the decision-making process, I will bring that back before council. Minor changes or things like that, no, but substantive, I would definitely bring it before you to let you know.
City Attorney Hamami, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to add, uh, in response to Councilmember Walton's comments regarding the risks and provisions of PPE, I, I presume you're referring to page five where we have the classifying employee risk with the pyramid, and that's a requirement to the executive order that somebody actually examine everybody's in, uh, position, every employee's position, and determine the level of risk, and then provide PPE accordingly. I don't think that there's an intention to provide PPE to visitors.
That's fine, I just would, I would hope that we don't allow that into the building in causing, um, our employees to be exposed.
Great, thank you. So Councilmember Kennedy made the original motion, we are still looking for a second.
I'll support that. Could I ask, ask one more question?
Go ahead, Councilmember Kibble.
Um, Paul, do you have, or have you considered like a sanitation station when you enter, where you could have a garbage can, and they could wash their hands off after they dispose of their gloves, you know, when customers come in?
Paul, we do have numerous locations where there are the hand sanitizers, specifically just before you do in fact walk into our area.
It'd be good to have a garbage can there and maybe a sign that would say shed your gloves, too, so.
Yeah, I, I think we have, we may have to be very careful of something like that, that we, people may want to keep gloves on, and I don't know if there's any, if there's a legal thing that we could do to force people to take off their gloves, or if we can force even people to even wear masks.
You could force them to wash their hands with the sanitizer with gloves on, wouldn't you? Or couldn't you?
I, I don't know, that, that's a legal issue, I'm unaware if we could force people to, to put that hand sanitizer on their hands or not.
On their gloves. So they'd sanitize their gloves, if they come in with dirty gloves, at least it would peel whatever was on them.
I guess I would ask this, if that's the case, what's the difference if them weren't having, having that on their hands and walking in and touching something, or whether they had it on their gloves? I'm not a, I'm not a medical expert, I can't really say whether you could pass it on with your hands, less so than gloves, I don't really know.
I think that Mrs. Walton's, um, comment speaks to the idea that that, it travels on gloves easily, so you're moving it from one location to another. If you sanitize the gloves as you get to the station, that's no longer a threat. If they don't want to get rid of their gloves, I don't know. Maybe it's awful.
I'm not an expert by far, so I don't want to speak or say anything incorrectly, but I do not believe that, um, hand sanitizing gloves actually has any effect, I think it actually breaks down the gloves.
Hmm.
Um, so, I'm not 100% on that, perhaps we can look into the legality of that, but I also believe you can require face masks, and you can require them that they, the CDC does not require gloves be worn anywhere. It only requires that you wear gloves if you are providing care for a person with COVID.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Uh, so we have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Kibble, to approve the Preparedness and Response Plan. Are we ready to move on to a roll call vote, or is there any further discussion on this? All right, city clerk Deaton, would you mind leading us in a roll call vote, please?
Kibble?
Yes.
Walton?
Uh, I'm unsure, are we making the changes that we just discussed? Do we have a amendment to the motion to change the township to city?
Yeah, the motion was amended to approve the, approve the, approve the, uh, proposal here as amended, is how it was stated.
Perfect, thank you, then yes.
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Hellcat?
Yes.
Motion passes, sorry, um, moving on to new business number five this evening, Fieldstone Plan Development, Rezoning and Preliminary PD Site Plan Approval.
Mr. Mayor, we've received a recommendation from the Planning Commission on May 14th, 2020, for Fieldstone Plan Development, Rezoning and Preliminary, uh, PD Site Plan Approval. Uh, this property was involved in requests for 11.65 acres on the south side of 11 mile, uh, quarter mile west of Pontiac Trail. It's a regularly shaped parcel located to the west and north of Colonial Acres, and also bordered by the railroad tracks. As you recall, this was brought back, brought before city council in 2018, when the development was originally called Thomasville. They previously approved a preliminary stage one site plan to rezone the parcel, but the project stalled prior to final approval, and the preliminary site plan expired, and the rezoning reverted back to RM1 percent to the city zoning ordinance. Well, our group, with Polty Homes, a new developer, gained the process, and has submitted the proposal, and I will let, um, our planner Kelly McIntyre to describe the rest of the process, and introduce the other individuals who are here representing, uh, the applicants.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Zalnack. Um, the process for the plan development review is a four-step process. Um, first, the planning commission, um, views the application, has a public hearing for the rezoning, and also reviews the preliminary or stage one, uh, plan development site plan. As Ms. Zalnack stated, those were done, um, that was done on March 12th, the public hearing. The applicant, um, was before the planning commission, planning commission at that point actually tabled the item to, um, allow the applicant to provide additional information and to make some adjustments to the proposed plan. Um, it was back before the planning commission on May 14th, 2020, and they made, the planning commission made a positive recommendation to the council. Um, something that's probably important to note, um, is that plan developments are basically, it's a type of development as well as a regulatory process. Um, a plan development allows flexibility for the developer to meet land use goals for the city.
Yeah, here.
Yeah, here.
Uh, one, one second, everybody. Kelly, could, could you just see if, if we could either move your microphone a little closer, or, or we're dealing with a, a really low volume.
Okay, is that better?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Plan development is a type of development, um, as well as a regulatory process, approving the development. Uh, it allows flexibility for the developer to meet, uh, the land use goals of the city, um, and by doing so, use, creative use of the space, um, without being bound to the zoning standards strictly. Essentially, it allows, um, the developer to custom build a development that otherwise may not be built, if they had to adhere to the strict zoning. Um, common things, density setbacks and other land use regulations are common, that they are adjusted to allow the development to be built. Um, the planning commission, uh, went through the application, and as such, they are proposing a positive, um, they're proposing recommendation for approval, uh, based on a number of conditions. Um, I will list the conditions, but before I even, I will list the conditions, I will also allow, um, after this, the applicant, um, from, um, our, Mike Nollis from um, our group is here, um, and he can, um, do a, he has quite a nice presentation to explain, um, the development to you. But the recommendation for approval that the cap, planning commission made was, uh, subject to a waiver to allow a lot area of 5,823 square feet, to allow a minimum lot width of 50 feet, to allow a overall density of 4.3 units per acre, to allow a side yard setback of five feet totaling a minimum of 10 feet between the structures. A waiver to allow the maximum overall coverage of 30%, as specifically noted in the calculation table, and maximum impervious surface not to exceed 35. A waiver for a 30-foot yard setback for lots seven, 18, 20, 21, and 22, as they drop below 30 feet. Um, that the requirements of installation of landscape buffering abutting Colonial Acres be installed prior to the beginning of the project in construction. Um, that brick and stone be required on the first floor site elevations, and facades with 100% siding will not be offered to options, as an option to buyers. Wainscoting will be used on lots 27 and 28 side elevations. Um, we will, um, the applicant will adhere to an anti-monotony policy established as part of the condo docs, um, and, and missing information for calculations, uh, for landscaping can be provided at final site plan approval. This was also be conditioned upon the draft condominium documents to be submitted, and, um, also the approval and rezoning of the, um, parcel, uh, from RM1 to PD. Uh, that will require two readings from the city council, so the city council can do a reading, um, today, and if they are so inclined, they may make a recommendation, um, uh, contingent upon the second reading, or which is the final step in rezoning, um, the, uh, property. Um, I will actually, I would like to turn it over to Mike Nollis of um, our group, uh, he is, I'm sorry, he is here, I think that actually Lisa has something that she would like to.
Yeah, city, Hamami, go ahead.
Uh, before there's any further discussion, I, I was contacted shortly before this meeting, I, I think Councilmember Richards wanted to make a disclosure, uh, on a, on what he was concerned about, a potential conflict, and so I wanted to give him that opportunity before we go into any discussions on that. I don't think it's an issue, but I do think it's appropriate for the disclosure.
Thank you, City Attorney Hamami. Councilmember Richards, um, you have been recognized, go ahead.
Uh, just for the record, uh, I have been a common shareholder of Polty Homes for many years. I have, uh, I believe 16 shares, common stock, and I have no connection with the company directly, other than that, okay? I'm just a shareholder and, uh, nothing else. Um, I don't think this should be an issue, uh, since I don't buy or sell, and I don't, uh, I just hold it, you know, and one thing or another, it's a, I, but I feel it's property, disclose it, okay, before we go into this, and, uh, if council wants to vote on this, uh, you got my approval, okay, but, uh, I, I, I think I have something to contribute to the overall discussion here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. City Attorney Hamami, do you see any issues with this?
So, um, you know, a, as you all know, conflict of interest questions are complicated, they're not very easy questions to answer. Our charter and our ordinance failed to define the term financial interest. Generally speaking, though, uh, stock in a publicly traded corporation is so tenuous that I don't feel it rises to the level where, uh, he, Councilmember, um, Richards needs to abstain, but it, his disclosure, if anybody else is uncomfortable with him proceeding based on his disclosure, then that's a discussion that council should have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any feedback on Councilmember Richard's statement? Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I'm completely fine with it.
Yeah, oh, excuse me, Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Um, I also have a conflict of interest that I wanted to disclose.
Go ahead.
Um, I don't have a conflict of interest with respect to the first motion, which is the rezoning, it's with the second motion, and, um, you can't just look at the plan. Uh, the issue is, is connecting Lexington, which is part of Colonial Acres, to this project. When you look at the plans itself, it doesn't show the road connecting, but when you get into But when you get into the documents, especially from CIB, it's number five on circulation. It does say, "An access easement agreement to the property line is the next best option just in case the connection can be made sometime in the future." This easement should be put in place prior to issuance of the building permits. So this is now becoming a requirement that easement that is between Colonial Acres on Lexington and this particular project. And that's the conflict because I can't go into the legal discussions I've had with my client, but I do have a conflict. I am being paid for my legal work and so I do have a financial interest. I've raised this before, so this isn't anything new to council.
Kelly, go ahead.
Just to clarify, Mr. Kurtzwell, yes, that was a recommendation in our letter, but the Planning Commission did not make that as a condition of their approval. They did not choose to include that. So that is not a stipulation for the approval of this plan.
Then why do you have it in your?
It's in my letter. You have a copy of my letter that I presented to the Planning Commission.
Okay, then, because what happens is, is that you read your letter and did you, are you going to discuss all the items that are in your letter that the Planning Commission did not approve?
I can discuss them if that's what you would like me to do.
Well, I think that's appropriate. I mean, I think you have to, you have to let us know because this is a pretty detailed document. I mean, you're talking about a lot of things in here that, you're talking about the waivers, the building, you're talking about everything, so.
Yeah, yes, I wanted to give the applicant an opportunity to introduce the project and then I can talk about the specifics of our letter and what the Planning Commission, what their recommendation is, what based upon with the details.
So this is not going to be a requirement at all at any time, this easement agreement?
Correct.
Okay, that's a different story. That's a very different story, okay? I withdraw my conflict.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell, thank you, Kelly. And we're going to head over to City Attorney Hamamay, go ahead, thank you.
I think if nobody has any issues with Councilmember Richards' disclosure, then I think provided that he feels he can make an unbiased decision and his stock membership has zero effect on his decision today, also considering the fact that this is simply a rezoning and site plan approval, I think that you can go forward as long as he indicates that he can make a decision unbiased.
Thank you for helping us navigate that. And I'm pretty sure Councilmember Richards did state that. Councilmember Richards, would you like to reiterate that?
No, I understand what she's saying. I just wanted to make sure that somebody doesn't complain that I didn't disclose something and possibly expose myself to censure, okay, in the future. And so we could all have transparency and move smoothly.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards, City Attorney Hamamay. Kelly, if you would like to go ahead and introduce the folks that would like to be, are prepared to present this evening, please do.
Yes, we have Mr. Mike Knowles from UMLR Group. And also online, not shown, I'm not sure if he will speak, but we do have Joe Scorey of Pulte Homes. And I believe that Mike Knowles has some presentation or some information that he would like to share with the council to introduce the project.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. Good evening, Mayor and council people. I am Mike Knowles, as Ms. McIntyre said, and I have a presentation for you, a short presentation. I'm going to share my screen now. I don't know if you need to throw a toggle or not, but I'll throw mine and see if you can see this. Are you receiving me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Good evening, again, Mike Knowles with the UMLR Group, 49287 West Road in Wickham, representing Pulte Homes tonight. We're pleased to present the Fieldstone Plan Development for your consideration. Pulte Homes of Michigan will be the developer and the builder of the project and Joe Scorey is also on the call. Proposed 50-unit detached single-family residential site condominium development fronts on 11 Mile Road across from the west property line of Trotters Point and abuts Colonial Acres Multiple Family Condominium on the east and south. The 11.63-acre triangular site is challenging. It's located on the city limit and abuts an active CNO railroad track. You can see the picture of the site in the bottom left of your screen. Three-quarters of the 11 Mile Road frontage is unpaved. A pond is also located in the northwest corner of the site. The current zoning for the subject property is RM1 Town Homes or Apartment Units. If developed as a multifamily residential site, zoning permit up to 154 units on this site. We are not proposing 154 units. Pulte, as the contract purchaser, is before you tonight to request your consideration for the plan recommended by Planning Commission and endorsed by several of the neighbors. We are extremely grateful for their support and appreciate that they recognize the benefits of our proposal and came out to the public hearing to voice their appreciation for the plan. Fieldstone is a proposed PD with 50 units, meeting the PD qualification conditions. The reduced density will have a beneficial effect on surrounding property. The reduction by 104 units requires fewer public services, traffic congestion and demands on public utilities will be lessened, and the city's plan development standards encourage efficient use of public utilities and services to reduce the burden on circulation systems, surrounding properties and the environment. This beneficial effect would not be achieved under the current zoning permitted density. The proposal is consistent with the city's master plan. This proposal provides attractive, affordable housing for a wide market, including empty nesters and first-time buyers. It serves as a nice transition between the high-density use to the south and east and the larger lots to the north. The project includes 21.6% open space. The open space locations help buffer the development from the railroad tracks and 11 Mile Road. It also provides space for the stormwater management system. The existing pond at the northwest corner of the property will be the focal point of the open space. A walking path around the pond will provide active recreation. Park benches are proposed near the pond for pedestrians to sit and enjoy the shade of the preserved trees. A grove of 10-inch to 30-inch red oak, white oak and black oak along 11 Mile Road has been preserved as part of the plan. Additional open areas are provided along the tracks and along 11 Mile Road to provide buffers. And you can see at the top of the screen, some actual photos from the site. You can see the paved section of 11 Mile on the right, unpaved section in the center and some of the preserved trees and the existing pond. For PD qualification, natural features must be reasonably protected and preserved. Given the challenging shape of the lot and the unique characteristics of the site, the homes have been clustered together to allow the creation of buffers. Landscaping and a privacy fence are provided in the buffer along the south and east property lines abutting the existing multifamily development. Residents of Colonial Acres requested the privacy fence that is provided on the plan. Additional landscaping is proposed along the railroad tracks to create a vegetated buffer. The plant sizes exceed ordinance requirements. There are 83 new 3-inch trees, 24 10-foot conifers, 56 5-foot junipers and arborvitae, seven ornamental trees and 119 bushes and perennials and ornamental grasses. The fencing can be installed prior to the beginning of development. The land development period is expected to take three months. So planting the landscape itself prior to the development is not recommended to minimize the damage and ensure plant health. It can, however, be planted before construction of the homes begins. To cluster the homes, side yards have been reduced. The 30-foot rear yard setbacks create 60-foot yard separations between the units that back to one another. Landscaping has been provided in the front and rear of the homes to create privacy and appeal. The pond has been repurposed as a detention basin and 124 trees will be preserved. The recreation trail and four benches are planned around the pond and the preserved wooded area. Sidewalks for pedestrian circulation are provided throughout the development. Then there were some added features. The Planning Commission requested some additional sidewalks, sidewalk connections to be added to the plan. Those I've highlighted in red on the slide that you see before you. These red sidewalk locations were all added as a result of Planning Commission. The reason that this area is not colored in is because we had to reconfigure some lot lines to be able to fit the sidewalk in along this side. You noticed Ms. McIntyre had mentioned some homes will get brick wainscot on the sides and rear. These are the two homes that they were referring to because of the location of the sidewalk in proximity to those homes. They wanted a hardier surface along those homes. All the other homes do have front elevations with components of brick and stone on the front elevations. And I'll get into that a little bit more in another slide. The changes requested by Planning Commission and approved by Planning Commission include the added internal sidewalk connections, which I just went through, the added proposed bench locations to the site plan, which are shown here in blue, along the nature trail. We added the proposed streetlight locations to the plan. They were on the plan previously, but they were obscured when the site plan was modified. We brought those back as they were in the last submittal and with final engineering, we'll pick specifications for these lights and we'll make sure that we don't add to some light pollution issues for the neighbors by making sure we have shielding and maybe tweaking the type and location of the lights. But we are providing streetlights throughout the community. Updated coverage notes to reflect the conclusions of the Lot Fit Study and discussions with Planning Commission have been submitted. The revised Lot Fit summary and coverage calculations were attached to the submittal and demonstrate a maximum of 35% impervious coverage and a maximum of 30% overall lot building coverage. We know that this is a hot button for the city of South Lyon. Joe Scorey with Pulte is a resident and he's been watching intently over the last several years as you have discussed some of these coverages. So we know you don't take it lightly and so we wanted to bring forth a proposal that made sense. I'll get into that in a little bit more detail. And we also added additional elevations for improved architecture as a request of Planning Commission. Pulte is proposing five floor plans with optional structural features for each plan. At the bottom, you see two new plans that Pulte has added since you saw this proposal in its former iteration as Thomasville. At the bottom, the Aspire is an attractive home that will help differentiate the streetscape and the York is a 1,500-square-foot ranch which will appeal to empty nesters with a first-floor master down, also a request of some of your conversations in the past. The big problem that Pulte had with the last approval was that the old plans didn't fit. This is not a problem that Planning Commission or City Council created. This was a problem of our own accord. By specifying house sizes that were incorrect, not properly doing the Lot Fit matrix, we had a real problem and you thought you were getting three plans that fit most places and that's not what ended up happening with the Thomasville proposal. New architecture has been added. You can see this is one of the plans. It's now called the Oakdale. It was previously called the Newton. It's the same floor plan, but Pulte has a constant review, feedback from customers, clients, and they're constantly updating the elevations. I'm going to show you some great pictures moving forward, but you can see from these sketches that there's a whole lot of architectural detail. And the one that's highlighted in the middle is a craftsman-style home where they have added several brackets to the home to highlight the gables as well as this stone wainscot going around the front of the house. And I'll show you some more architectural features in a couple of slides coming up. This is one of the homes on the prior slide. What I've done here is I've highlighted it to show you that there's multiple types of siding on this front elevation with shakes to highlight the gable and some of the architectural elements. I highlighted the brackets here in yellow so that you can see those added architectural features. They've got windows of different sizes on the home to add some appeal, shutters on some of the windows, but not all of the windows, to give it some additional interest. There's craftsman-style columns with pedestal bases and tapered height. You can see here that there's a field of brick in this area under the front porch and a wainscot of brick over by the garage, giving this elevation some added charm and curb appeal. Here's a couple of photographs that I wanted to show you. This elevation on the left, the white one with the X, was excluded by Planning Commission. Though it is sort of a modern farmhouse type of plan that is popular these days, the one issue here is that there is no brick or stone on the house. So this plan is excluded. This plan is included. And one of the things you can see here is we've got multiple types of siding. We've got the stone on both the column pedestal bases and on the house itself. Makes a handsome front elevation. And you can see here on the side with the siding, it really doesn't detract from the home. Next slide is some of the new architecture, some added craftsman elevations. Here are some pictures of a couple of the new homes. The plans now target both underserved first-time buyers as well as empty nesters. And streetscape diversity is enhanced by the addition of these plans. A lot of times, these plans look much nicer in photographs than they do in renderings or on architectural plans. So I wanted to show you some of those. Here's the Hampton. This was one of the plans that you previously approved, the new elevation. As I said, Pulte has done a great job of updating it, making it look more modern. It's a very handsome elevation. Structural options will also be offered, which will further enhance the curb appeal and diversity of the homes. Enclosed sunrooms in the back increase appeal, privacy and diversity. And extended garages provide storage and handicap accessibility options. My folks ended up getting an extended garage on theirs so that my mom could get the handicap ramp in and they could still fit two cars in the garage. Brick, optional brick is going to be offered on the sides and rear. However, it does add to lot coverage ranging on these homes between 42 to 122 square feet, increase in impervious area on the plan. This was one of the reasons that the old Thomasville plan didn't work for us because we weren't even able to offer brick as an option. It wasn't required under the last approval, but we wanted to offer it and could not because of exceeding the maximum square footages in the lot matrix. The 5-foot setbacks, 5-foot side yard setbacks make these elevations, side elevations, difficult to see from any angle, but the sunrooms and the landscape further obscure these elevations. Pulte wishes also to maintain affordability for the offering. These are photographs that I took earlier this fall of the surrounding properties. None of them have standard brick on the sides and rear elevations. You can see my old house over in Trotters Point on Colt Drive. Joe Scorey also lives in city of South Lyon. I don't live in the city anymore. I used to, for eight years I lived in this house here. My house was all siding and you really can't see it because of decks and landscaping. We wanted to offer homes that were attractive and stylish. We wanted to offer homes that were attractive and stylish for the neighborhood, but we did not want to exceed the pricing that we're able to get at this challenging location on the tracks and on the gravel road. Moving on. So this is a picture of the Thomasville PD plan. So we believe the Fieldstone plan provides significant benefits to the community when compared to this previous plan. One major benefit is that we can actually build a house on every lot. The proposed unit count, layout, grading, utilities, access points, and open space remain literally identical to the Thomasville PD application that you previously approved. The Thomasville PD site plan restrictions conflicted with the approved house plans. They would not allow for the construction of the homes that were submitted. It would not provide the diversity of product that the city desired, and it would severely restrict buyer options. There are several lots here with red Xs that we couldn't fit any of the homes. Most of the other homes were restricted to base models. None of them had structural options, and there was a large monotony of homes that were offered. When I did the lot matrix, I was able to find, like on each lot, we have over a hundred possibilities of different combinations, given the homes that we're offering. And when you took the matrix out to the full extent, we had over seventeen thousand potential combinations on this site where we were limited to just a handful of one or two on the prior site. This slide, I know impervious area and lot coverage is a big issue. This slide shows a graphic depiction, so we can get to the numbers of the two areas used to calculate coverage. The lot area is shown in light green, and it's just under three hundred thousand square feet. The total site is around five hundred thousand square feet. This is the prior PD. It had an overall lot coverage of twenty-five point seven percent. This is the new one. What we've done on this plan, which proposes an overall lot coverage of thirty percent, what we've done on this plan is we took the maximum, the largest house that could possibly fit within the building envelope on this without changing the lot lines. So what house will fit, number one? Number two, we put in every single option that would fit within the building envelope. That's what you see in front of you. What are the chances that the buyers are going to all buy the largest lot, largest house possible and every single option available to them? Probably slim to none. If they do, the overall lot coverage would be thirty percent. The reason Pulte is requesting modifications to the building lot coverage is because the house sizes in the prior PD plan contained errors and emissions of our doing that prevented Pulte from building the approved plans and elevations that would have prevented structural options and would have prevented offering the brick. It should be noted that the thirty percent is the overall, it's all the lot area divided by all the buildings. The four percent difference. This slide is intended to show you by greening out the middle. This is the four percent difference between the old plan and new plan. It's basically rear elevations, which provide diversity, backyard appeal, varied front porches, extended garages, and an improved streetscape. You can see that in a couple of the photos. And this exhibit was really intended to show you that that four percent isn't, we're not changing the lots. We're not putting Bigfoot houses out there. This is far from a Bigfoot house development. It's to add diversity to the homes. Zero lot line comparison. The plan development makes a trade-off. It reduces the lot size in exchange for more open space. You saw that on the first slide with the dark green and the light green. The homes are clustered together to achieve that benefit, and that results in a skewed lot coverage calculation. Because under a zero lot line developments, if we just erase the lines and change nothing else, the exact same site plan with the exact same building footprints would result in a significantly lower building coverage ratio calculation. Here you see it, eighteen point four-four percent. It's the same exact plan with the lines erased. The only difference between the two is who cuts the grass. Now, we're not proposing to do a zero lot line development. The intent of this slide is to be illustrative, to show you that, yeah, this is not a Bigfoot development. This will be a fantastic development on a challenging parcel. It will provide new, affordable, well-designed housing to a wide market. I've taken up enough of your time. Thank you very much. We believe the new plan will provide significant improvements to the project. The goal is to provide additional diversity, curb appeal, expand buyer options, accurately describe lot coverage, and resolution to these issues is critical to the project viability for Pulte Homes. Thank you for your consideration. We look forward to discussing the details, and I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mike. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Mr. Knowles, I have some questions. In your presentation, you made mention of the fact that the city is very particular about its lot coverage standard. You're aware of that. And yet, the numbers that you're using to calculate the lot coverage are not the way we do it. And I'm sure you realize that as well. We don't take a look at how much the total parcel is covered by buildings as a factor of the total parcel size. Lot coverage is determined by the footprint of that house on each individual lot. That's how the twenty-five percent or the thirty percent with the waiver is calculated. It has nothing to do with how much green space you leave, how big the pond is, or anything else. Now, when we went through this discussion with Thomasville, they provided the information we needed to tell us the square footage of the lot, the square footage of the house that was going to be built, and basically the footprint of that house on that lot told us what the percent of lot coverage was. Okay? You probably have a copy of it. This is what it looked like. They went through and did it. I don't have a copy of that. So the other part in your narrative, you say, well, it didn't allow for all the additional extras that you want to have on the houses, the previous one in Thomasville. Well, that's because, you know, with the house itself on the lot, that brought it up to the allowable limit. There was no additional room for all those other amenities. So what I'm looking for is I'm looking for that chart that says, here's how big that lot is. Here's how big the lot is with the base house on it. Here's how big the property is if I add that extended garage, or if I add the sunroom, or if I add the gathering room. And then you can determine what options the buyer can buy and still remain at thirty percent or lower. Because it may come to the point, and we went through this discussion in Thomasville, that when a buyer buys this house, he's going to be told, you can put up a ten-by-thirty deck, and that's all you can put in this yard. And it was on the developer and the builder to make that perfectly clear to the buyer. So what I'm looking for, in order to make an informed decision on this, is that type of detail that shows exactly, because the stuff you gave us says, this house can be anywhere from eighteen hundred to twenty-one hundred square feet. Well, that doesn't tell me much, especially when I don't have the size of the lots and everything. When I look at the Thomasville package, I notice that you changed the houses that were agreed to in Thomasville on forty percent of the lots that we had already agreed to previously. Okay? So you've got a new floor plan and the rest of it. I'd like to see all the details on it to ensure the fact that we're going to stay at the thirty percent or lower on every one of those lots with the footprint of that house, with whatever amenities the buyer decides to buy, whether it's, you know, he wants a sunroom, he wants the extended garage. He can't have the gathering room because that's going to put it over thirty percent. And we need to hold to that percentage. The other question I have is, what is the size of the green space between the curb and the sidewalk?
Yes, sir. I can answer both of those questions. Thank you for asking them. One of the things that we did do, and I personally did this, was we put together a detailed lot matrix with the exact information that you're asking. What I have in front of me is the detailed lot matrix. This is for lot number one. On lot number one, this shows a hundred and seventy-eight possible combinations that are possible. It lists the same lot, square footage for lot number one, against every single possible combination that a buyer could buy for that lot. And then we've done that for all fifty lots. And so what we've done, when we put the range on the plan, is this is a document that we've shared in planning meetings. And, you know, I'm sorry we're in Zoom now because I'd love to give you a copy of it. I've got a stack of them on my desk.
I've got a mailbox at City Hall.
Okay, no problem. I'll be happy to drop one off for you in the morning, sir. So what this shows, and it's the exact same thing that the Thomasville did, but the Thomasville did it wrong because it just tried to put it down into one little matrix that fit for the entire site on sheet plan C one point O. And that's where they got into a problem. And that's why they couldn't build houses on certain lots. And that's why they couldn't offer any structural options because the house square footages were wrong, they were maxed out, they couldn't offer, they use only the base house and not any of these changes in elevations on the porches and on the structural options and the expanded garages. And we've done all that for you, sir. We have that. And what that shows is the Thomasville calculation of twenty-five point seven percent was also a range. It ranged from, I want to say seventeen to twenty-nine percent. And their calculation, that twenty-five point seven that they had on there, is the exact same way. So yes, I know exactly how the city of South Lyon calculates it, and I've done it per your specifications. I'm happy to share that with you, sir. The area between the back of the curb and the sidewalk is the same as the Thomasville plan, which is two feet, and it's required to be irrigated.
Okay, with regard to that, I'd like to just throw it out there for consideration by the council that if it's going to be that narrow, that the city never accept responsibility and dedication of the streets because you know what's going to happen if we start having to plow the streets. That snow is going on the sidewalk, and then we're going to get calls from the homeowners because there isn't enough green space separation between the curb and the sidewalk. It's going to be close to what's over at Quail Ridge. Now, in normal subdivisions, it'd be about five-foot separation or more. So I'd just like to throw that out there as well, that if we decide to move forward on this, that that's a stipulation as well, that the city never assume responsibility for the streets in that development, that the responsibility lies with the homeowners association. So at this particular point, without having the information that you have privy to you, and I have no idea why that wasn't provided to the council so that they can make a decision based on facts and not just calculations, based on footprints of houses to the total lot size, I'd recommend waiting till we have that data to review before we make a decision on going forward with this approval. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, no problem. Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Just for clarification, I believe Councilmember Kennedy meant quail run.
Quail run, right, sorry. My apologies.
Yep, no, I just wanted to clarify that. The floor is open. Mr. Knowles, did you have a response to that?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to say that this development is planned for private roads. The maintenance obligations and responsibilities will be in the homeowner's documents, in the condominium documents and Exhibit B. So absolutely one hundred percent, we're willing to agree that they won't be dedicated over to the city at any point. The homeowners association will be responsible for that maintenance obligation. And I do want to just reiterate that this document is available. And we've had it at meetings and I emailed it. I'm happy to share it with you. It's got the same type of range that Thomasville had. Thomasville had a range and this has a range. Our range goes from nineteen percent at the low end to thirty-three percent at the high end, and it averages to this thirty percent. So I just wanted to make that perfectly abundantly clear. And the deck, we also have reserved area for the decks on this, and that is all in the disclosures for the homeowners. So they know the size of the deck. This is not a swimming pools and patio type of development. There's going to be sixty feet between the rear of each one of the houses. So this is not that type of development. We have room for decks for every single house on here. And all of that will be disclosed, and it's all in black and white on the documents that we've been working with, your planning commission, your consulting staff, and have been submitted. Sir, I'd be happy to personally deliver one to you as well. We also are going through the process from step one again. So we've got to go through the preliminary and come back to you for the final. So if I'm wrong, I will eat crow, but I've spent so many hours with these documents and with these plans to figure out what fits and what doesn't. I'm extremely confident that I could walk you through this document or deliver one to you and give yourself another level of comfort with this project. Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, one moment, please. Ms. McIntyre, you asked to be recognized, and I'm going to come over to you.
Yes. During the council's previous review, when they were looking at Thomasville, it was asked by the council to show the absolute maximum amount of space or area that would be, could and would be occupied by a building. So that is what we have asked the applicant to show you. They do have a matrix that shows you all the different options. But what they have on their plan is if the applicant, or if the home buyer chose every single option, this is as large as it would get. We wanted to be very clear about showing you the largest possible footprint that was out there. It could be reduced, but it will not get any larger than what you're seeing on the plan. And that was a concern at previous meetings, and so that's why we presented it this way.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Kelly, you know where we stand on the lot coverage. Understanding that, I would have thought that that document would have been provided like we wanted when we had Thomasville before us, so that when we were going through the documents, we would have had that available for review. It's commendable they went to the planning commission. I'm questioning why it didn't go to the council members. And, Mr. Knowles, it isn't just delivering one copy to me. It's a copy to the other six people on the council that also need to be aware of this. When you say there's one configuration that's thirty-three percent, that's one configuration that is not allowed. So somebody's not going to get something that they want from an option standpoint because that exceeds the thirty percent that the waiver is being granted for potentially.
No, sir. So just like the Thomasville proposal, the Thomasville proposal averaged twenty-five point seven. There were some that exceeded twenty-five. That's the same as this. This ranges, and the maximum on any one individual lot is thirty-three percent. The average overall is thirty percent.
We don't deal with averages. We deal with absolutes. The waiver is for thirty percent per lot. It is based on averages. It's thirty percent. That's already five percent over what our ordinance calls for.
It is absolutely black and white on the plan with the waiver. It's in the narrative, it's on the plan, it's in the backup documentation that we're showing the calculation for every single one of those possible houses, all seventeen thousand eight hundred combinations on fifty lots. We've calculated it for each and every one of them. And so we're asking you for your recommendation for a specific plan, the plan before you tonight. The only difference between the plan that you previously approved and the plan that's here tonight is that the range is four percent higher to be able to offer structural options and off of the front and the back of the house, to add diversity to the houses. Without that, you only have two houses on fifty lots, and it's a dead deal.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'm looking to see the detail before I move this thing forward. You know, I'm not the one that didn't provide the documentation to the council. The waiver is for thirty percent. It's not for thirty percent average. It's for thirty percent. If you can't get the house to fit there in the thirty percent waiver, which is five additional percentage points over what we offer in the ordinance, then maybe we need to look at the footprint for the base house, decreasing the number of houses in the development, increasing the lot size or whatever it takes to put it within that constraint. It isn't an average, it's an absolute by lot.
Kibble, go ahead.
I was happy to see that you were able to accomplish getting sidewalk all the way around the development at a meeting that I had attended. You had, I think it was thirty-three in the corner there. You weren't able to shoehorn it in because there was not enough space. I'm grateful also for the additional sidewalk that you're providing around the perimeter. perimeter. I, I still won't be supporting this. Six waivers and all the other bend spindle and mutilating of the regular rules is just far excessive to me. And to Councilman Kennedy, Kennedy's comment, 33 foot isn't within the 30, 30, or 33%, excuse me, isn't within the 30%. You're taking, you keep talking about the aggregate. And that isn't, at least not to my understanding, that is not the language that we have in the ordinance. So that's just problematic for me. This certainly is an improvement from the Thomasville package. Nonetheless, I'm in the same camp. You can't reach that 30% coverage mark. And if you have to shed a lot or two to be able to accomplish that, that's my feeling. You need to accomplish it with shedding a lot. So I just wanted to point that out, that I was appreciative of the sidewalk being attended to though. Thank you.
I have questions.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is for both Kelly and Mr. Knowles. And I, either one of you probably got the answers, one more than the other for different ones. Okay, on the first part of Kelly's presentation, Article Number 10, it says, "An anti-monotony policy be established as part of the condominium documents." I'd like you to please explain to me and the rest of the council what that is all about. Moving on, I want to get to the next one. Mr. Knowles, okay. Is Mr. Cavalieri still the previous owner of Thomasville? Is he still an owner of record of any portion of this land or a member of the UMLR group as a partner or associate? Number three, is UMLR a wholly owned subsidiary of Pulte Group Homes? And number four, it's probably good that you've planned to elevate the landscape of the land because these houses don't have basements. But have you ever, here's the question, have you had an underground survey of ground table water in this lot, this acreage by a hydrogeology company? Because you, you have some water problems on this property. That's it. Those are four questions.
Yes, sir. I can answer your questions. Thank you for them. Number one, anti-monotony ordinance means that you can't build the same house on either side, same house and elevation. So each of the five houses, the models that we provide, offer, I should say, have four elevations on them. You can't have the same elevation and same house next door on either side or directly across the street. It's anti-monotony ordinance. Pulte does that just as a matter of practice because people don't like it when somebody builds the exact same house right next door to them. City of South Lyon also has similar architectural restrictions. And we've agreed to, to follow those rules. That was question number one. Question number two about Cavaliero, he is the landowner. He owns the land 100, 100%.
Mike, let me, let me just interrupt. This is Joe Score. I'm with Pulte Homes in Michigan. I think I want to just clarify something. Lorenzo Cavalier is not the owner of the property. He represents the owner of the property. He is a developer. The ownership of the property has not changed. Pulte Homes does not own the property. We are a contract purchaser. But again, Lorenzo Cavalier is not the owner. He is a, he's a representative of the current owner of the property.
Thanks, Joe. The third question was regarding the UMLR group. The UMLR group has no connection to Mr. Cavalier. I have never met Mr. Cavalier, never spoken to him. The UMLR group has zero connection to that individual.
Then he is not a partner or associate in any way.
No, sir. He's not a partner or associate in any way, shape, or form. Never heard of him. Has no part with the business, the, the company that I work for. The fourth question was, does, is UMLR a wholly owned subsidiary of Pulte? Absolutely not. UMLR is owned by Wes Lee UMLR. He owns the, the company 100%. It's a surveying and engineering firm. We provide land development services. I've been with the company for two years. The company's been in business for 10 years. And prior to that, I was with Toll Brothers for 20 years. So there's no connection with this particular person that you mentioned. That was question number four. Question number five, I might have forgot that one.
Have you had an underground survey of ground table water?
Yeah.
By hydrogeology group?
Yes, sir. So step one on Pulte's due diligence is to do an environmental study and a geotech study. So they have both the geotechnical and the environmental studies for the property. I can't remember off the top of my head if it was included in the plan sets. A lot of times we include them right on the plans, the geotech. But if not, we're also happy to submit that. A lot of times we do submit these additional studies, including lot matrices, geotech, those types of things. They don't make it on the plans, but they're part of the overall approval and review by your staff and consultants. So yes, sir, they have done that.
Okay, I would like, I think all of us would like to see something along that line because we're all aware of why the original owner, who was Pelkey, never built on that land. Okay. And just kept filling it in with tailings from the other section six or section five when he was developing that in colonial acres. So if you've got that information, I'd like you to include it in the next time we come around here to see what they have to say about that. Because we all are aware of water in that area and where it goes. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kurtswell, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, I just want to say, you do have a difficult parcel to work with. It's, there's no doubt. It's very, very difficult. And I think that there are individuals in the community that are waiting for this development because there is a shortage of housing inventory in the city. I think any realtor will tell you that. There's an extreme shortage of housing. And this fits a great demographic, the new people coming in and the empty nesters. You know, hopefully we can work it out. I think you have a great product here. I'm familiar with the Pulte product. I'm also familiar with your matrices. I've seen them before. So I'm not too concerned about that. I mean, that's just, I understand what a matrix is. I understand the numbers that go into it. So, you know, I don't mind looking at it, but I pretty much understand what it is conceptually. And I've, I've worked with them before. So that's not a real issue for me by any means. But I think what's important is the visual of what these homes potentially are going to look like. And I think you've got just an outstanding product, which we do not have in the city. And I can remember being on the planning commission when Lexington was coming in and the Roberts brothers bought that property during the recession. And we were assured on the planning commission that no two would look alike. And so I'm glad to see the anti-monotony provision going in. That, that's really key. And so I was disappointed with that project, that they didn't follow through on what they said. So with that, I do want to ask Joe Score, who does own the property? Who is the landowner of that property?
You know, I don't know the LLC off the top of my head, but the gentleman's name is Mike Calcaterra. And he is a resident in this, in the state of Michigan.
Mike Cal, okay. All right.
Yeah. Again, the owner is an LLC that he controls. But off the top of my head, I, you know, I could get it to you. I could tell you what the LLC's name is, but, but he's the individual that's.
Does he own it free and clear from Thomasville, from, from, from the original? Or is there still that contract that needs to be?
So all I can tell you, all I can tell you is, he is the, he was the owner of the property when this project came before you in the last, I guess, couple of years. He is the owner of the, or the LLC that he controls is the owner of the property now. Whether there's a mortgage on it, or, you know, he owns it outright, that off the top of my head, I, you know, I don't know. I'm, you know, not sure that's.
So he doesn't own it by land contract. He owns it, be simple outright?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So just to reiterate, it's, it's more than just a question of understanding the matrices that you have available. I understand that. It's, we're playing fast and loose with the lot coverage numbers that, oh, it's only 33%. So we shouldn't have a problem doing that. You know, it seems that we, we just don't seem to have that sense of obligation to hold firm to what the waiver is being asked for or potentially granted for at 30. If it's going to cover 33, it's not allowable. That's it. That house cannot be built with the options required on that property at 33%.
Mr. Knowles, go ahead.
Yes. The concept of the PD is that you ask for waivers. We, we write the ask and you consider our ask and either vote to deny it, vote to approve it, or vote to table it. So the ask is on the plans and in the narrative as a range up to 33% with an average of 30%. That's what we're asking for. What you're suggesting to me is that I asked for the wrong thing. So you, you can deny it or you can approve it, but the PD allows the flexibility. Why does it allow the flexibility? It allows the flexibility to reduce 104 townhome units. It allows the flexibility to have 21.6% open space. It allows the flexibility to incentivize somebody to build a development on a triangle piece on a corner sandwiched between a railroad track and a gravel road. So those things are all constraints. And so the PD offers, the PD in your code offers the flexibility. Yeah, there's seven waivers. Absolutely. There were six last time. And one of them was for the lot coverage a, as well. So we're only asking for, for one more waiver on the lot coverage. And so we wrote the ask. And why, what we're trying to, to present to you is to say, listen, we're not unreasonable people. We didn't change the lot lines. We didn't change the engineering. We didn't change the road network. What we did was we said, we changed the house. This house also has a bump out here, four inches of brick ledge to add brick around the sides, an extended garage to put in a handicap ramp. So those are the things that we clarified, which bumped up the range 4% from what, what it was before. And the average used to be 25.7. And now the average is 30, but there's still a range and the maximum is 33. It's not that your ordinance doesn't allow anything over 25. Your ordinance didn't allow this previously. So, so my, my point, sir, with all due respect, is that the PD allows us to create our ask. And this is our ask because we can offer these homes at these locations in these configurations. It's not that we haven't calculated anything correctly. I spent hours and hours and hours putting together these 15 pages and reading all the ordinances and reading your minute, meeting minutes when you, when you, when you debated and discussed them. And I know it's near and dear to your hearts. I mean no offense by it. I'm just saying for us to be able to build these houses, th, these are what the calculations come out to. I'm not flimflamming the numbers. So I just want to make that perfectly clear.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtswell?
I, I think, Mike, you gave a good explanation of plan developments is that you're dealing with a different animal when you're dealing with a plan development. And there's a reason why you have plan developments is because you're dealing with usually unique pieces of property that nobody else can deal with. And, and the plan development concept, which we have in our ordinance, allows for a developer to come in and be creative with, with the property. Now, to say that, well, our ordinance requires a maximum of 30% coverage. I don't care right now what the ordinance says. What I care about is that it is, the 33% is not offensive to me in a plan development concept. That, that is, this is not an unusual request to make. This happens in Lyon Township. This happens in any development where you have a PD. You will always find some of these issues that exceed whatever the ordinance is. If you're building by your ordinance, you don't need a plan development because you're building right by the ordinance. This is why you have, this is exactly why you have a plan development. And what he's trying to say, which I'm sure everybody understands, is that to get this product, this good, this nice, with these kinds of features, he needs a little bit of that extra room. I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to it by any means. I, I would vote for it tonight just because I, I know the value of time, the value of money. And I think this is a far superior project than what Thomasville brought. Besides, I, I have a certain amount of belief in the planning commission that they had more time to study it. If they're recommending it, I think they've probably done a very good job. I mean, they understand PDs. So it's not a problem for me.
I have a comment.
Excuse me. I believe Councilmember Kibble was asked to be recognized first, and then I will come over to you, Councilmember Richards.
Actually, the, the language doesn't speak to anything beyond the 30%. Whether you're doing it on an average or whatever, this is speaking directly to the lot coverage cannot exceed 30%. So the, I mean, you, you make it sound as though you can put all kinds of fancy stuff on there if we can just give you that extra 3%. That's, that's unfortunately, you could rationalize anything that you wanted to put on there by that kind of a judgment. We're, we have established some benchmarks that we don't want to exceed it. If we wanted them exceeded, they wouldn't end up being a high end. So I, I'm kind of taken with your, your stridentness, talking about the variety that you can afford us with all these cool little features. But we have to turn a blind eye to the fact that we don't want the, the house to be covering more lot than 30%. So that's, that's the challenge that you should have accepted.
No, it is the challenge I accepted. And, and the, your ordinance says it can't exceed 25. Okay.
Right. Your waivers, the waiver that you're asking for says 30. It doesn't say 33. It says 30.
The plan, the plan that we submitted says 33. The waiver that was written says an overall. So the wave, we didn't write the waiver. Okay. We, we, we provided the narrative and the plan. And if you look at the narrative and you look at the plan on sheet C 1.0, it's got maximum percent of lot covered by all buildings per lot, 33%. That's what we're asking for. And, and you, you're challenging me on what I'm asking for. I'm telling you, we asked for 33%.
I'm looking at a document that doesn't say that, sir.
But I submitted 50, a 54-page plan set and a narrative that asking specifically for that. And the waiver in front of you is an internal document. I didn't write the waiver. And it says on that internal document that it's an overall, it doesn't say on a lot by lot basis. And my plans are explicitly clear, as well as the spreadsheet and all the other documentation, the multiple narratives that we've turned in, all said it's a range. The maximum is 33. And the average works out to 30. And, 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 and that is on the plans. It's on, on the narrative. The request.
Do you weigh in on where on earth this information is at?
Kelly, you're muted.
I was gonna say, if you want me to, I can just say it's on the front page plan entitled C 1.0 in the upper left-hand corner of your plan. It highlights zoning information and it highlights the number of buildings and how the calculations are done.
Okay. So we need to cross-check the five sets of information packages that we've received on this to make sure that we have the last version?
There are no version changes. The site plan that you have is the, is what was presented to the commission and has been along.
When we get an agenda item, I'm expecting the pertinent information to be in this document, not having to fish through everything that we've seen since the day one of this project.
Well, my fear was if I didn't provide all the information, then you wouldn't make a decision because you. Well, my fear was if I didn't provide all the information, then you wouldn't make a decision because you didn't have all the information. So I wanted, and this has a long history, so I wanted to provide that. And I will say that the waiver does say allow a maximum of overall, a maximum overall building coverage of thirty percent. So what Mr. Knowles say, it it's it says overall, and it actually refers to the document where it's specified on the table. So I mean, those are the things. So he's he's not giving you inaccurate information. Um, this is what the planning commission motioned. This was part of what they stated for their waiver. So he wasn't the thirty, that's where the thirty percent comes from, and it's on this table. Um, the zoning information table where it says max lot percent of lot area covered by all buildings, thirty percent.
Do you?
And then there's a note that says something even more than that.
Can you see this document?
Yes, I prepared that document.
Okay, because this is actually like more often than not, what's driving the information exchanges rather than going through the minutia and blueprints. Something that's pertinent enough about a maximize lot coverage, a nuance to the language of a net a lot coverage should have been something that was very clear.
Kibble, thank you, Ms. McIntyre. Councilmember Kennedy, I'm going to come to you, but not until I recognize Councilmember Richards first. Go ahead, Councilmember Richards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I want to just make a point for clarification. I have to agree with Councilmember Kurzweil that this plan is greatly improved from Thomasville and whatever Thomasville was. But the fact remains, this whole thing is trying to push or pack twenty pounds of potatoes into a twelve-pound sack. And I will guarantee you that if this goes through, even if it's only half completed, okay, other property owners on the outskirts of the city are going to apply for annexation and try to do the same thing uh, in the next ten years or less. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Um, just to corral this just for a moment. Councilmember Kennedy, I'm going to come to you next. Um, we've had multiple requests from council members that may want some more information. Um, this this is taking up quite a bit of time. I appreciate Mr. Knowles and Mr. Scory and their preparedness for tonight's meeting. But if we're going to get to a point where we're going to, we're going to need more information, uh, I would entertain the possibility of tabling this until that information can reach um, all of us. So with that in mind, I'll recognize Councilmember Kennedy. Go ahead.
And I'll make that motion to table it till we have all of the requested information available so that we can take our time and go through it thoroughly.
Okay, Councilmember Kennedy, when we go to table something, I think we're going to need a date on that. Do we want to just go to the next meeting? Um, I I understand the the time urgency for everyone involved, so if we we need a timetable with that as well.
What's the date of the next meeting?
Mayor, may I?
Yes, please. City Attorney Hamami, go ahead.
Kelly, um, this can go along with the rezoning, which requires two readings. If it's scheduled at the next meeting, in light of the publication issues that we're having, will you have it published in time for the next meeting?
Uh, for this, well, it has already been published. It was published. Are you talking about the first reading, second reading?
The second, for second reading.
I would have to check if it's, what is the date again? I don't think it will meet.
Twenty-second. It would be the next meeting.
Unless it's published in the Oakland Press.
Which, correct, we could do that.
Which costs a little bit more.
It does cost more, and we can talk.
But just a consideration, I just wanted council to be aware that there's a publication issue for the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, uh, City Attorney Hamami. Um, jumping back to Councilmember Kennedy, um, yeah, we would need the date for the for the tabling.
June twenty-second.
I'll support.
So we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please, oh, City Attorney Hamami, go ahead.
Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong. There needs to be a publication before the zoning ordinance can be adapted.
Um, no, no, they they had a public hearing for the rezoning portion. So then we do reading one and reading two, and then after reading two, we go publish, and then it's effective in a certain number of days. I think it's ten or fourteen.
Okay, then I'm sorry, then I'm sorry to have interrupted.
Yeah.
I'd rather us get it right. So thank you, City Attorney Hamami. Uh, we have a motion in a second on the floor. Councilor, City Clerk Deaton, would you give us a roll call vote?
Kennedy?
Yes.
Dilg? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Yes, I was on.
Thank you. Uh, Richards?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kurzweil?
Yes.
Kurzweil?
Yes.
Thank you. Walton?
Yes.
Felchette?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
And I guess the the underlying consideration or thought is that the requested materials, which appear to be readily available, are provided posthaste so that we have the benefit of the full two weeks to go through them.
Certainly. Ms. McIntyre, go ahead.
Um, I would like to get very specifically, besides that table, what else, information you need to provide. And I I also feel like I, we don't, I don't want to discount the amount of time and effort that the planning commission did put into this. This is all they do. They just review site plans. They spend a lot of time going through this. Um, they, you know, they even tabled it and had a second meeting. They did not send it forward until they felt comfortable with the plan. Um, and again, I just want, you know, it, what we bring to you wasn't haphazard, and it did have a lot of consideration. I'm happy to provide you or have the applicant provide you with tables. But if there's additional information that you're not getting, I need to know specifically what it is. So if if besides the table, what else can I provide?
Request.
I'm sorry?
I believe Councilman Richards requested some additional information as well.
Okay.
Correct.
We also want to see that that matrix that Mr. Knowles had talked about that speaks to every configuration of home that can go on every lot.
We can do that.
And Councilman Richards requested the geologic or hydraulic survey.
Correct.
Yes. Would you like to have the engineer comment on that then as well? I think that I would wouldn't be qualified. If if we want to bring that information to you, then I think that we should have the engineers comment on the information. Otherwise, it it might not mean anything to anybody.
If they've got something written up, it seems as though that would be pertinent for us to read.
Okay. Councilmember Kurzweil, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Kelly, could you please put in writing that, uh, the, in your letter, paragraph five, uh, that that has been withdrawn as a consideration regarding that easement um, on Lexington?
Yes, I can.
That access easement. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly, do you have any further questions that you want to clarify before we move on?
No, I I'll listen to the minutes, or I'll review the minutes again to make sure I have everything.
If there's anything that arises that you need, please feel free to reach out, and we'll we'll get it straightened out.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for everyone's time this evening.
Thank you.
Um, at this time, we are going to move on to the budget this evening. Does anyone have anything on the budget this evening? We have Patricia here, if anyone has any questions. Thank you for being here. Okay, with no one asking to be recognized, and thank you for being.
Oh, you know what?
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Actually, something had come up over the weekend um, in regard to an account that would pretty much receive all the stuff that would go to the Veterans Memorial. Um, it's, the concern was that it, you know, it would end up going in general fund, and it wouldn't roll over year after year. It seems like there's got to be some device that we can use where it just accrues annually rather than having to to just fish out whatever, like start at the, start the clock again, knowing that there's money left that hadn't been spent out to improve the the memorial. Is that something that you guys can find a vehicle for?
You want to comment first?
Sure. Well, we have a, the option, um, if council so chooses, I'm sorry, Councilmember Kibble, to um, set up a separate fund as opposed to just having the Veterans Memorial project in the general fund. We could establish it as its own fund and set up its own bank account in which if there were um, any revenues left over at the end of the fiscal year, they could roll over into the next year as part of a fund balance.
Just out of curiosity, the cost of having that account, does that eat up?
Yeah, we would have to look into that. We would have to probably shop around to a few different banks and get um, some options to present to council and see what our best um, options may be for, you know, garnering interest and fees that we would um, potentially absorb during the year for um, any kind of transactions that we did.
Yeah, I'd hate to end up losing it frivolously just because we wanted to keep it isolated from. It just seems like there'd be some accounting vehicle that even if it did close out at the end of the year, we have whatever the number was that you could kind of move forward so you knew what that balance would have been growing. Well, okay.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
And I think that's a good point, Councilmember Kibble, because that would keep contributions that residents make and help ensure that they actually went for the Veterans Memorial itself.
Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
I understand that if I make a contribution to the city of a thousand dollars for the Veterans Memorial, the city is obligated to hold that money in trust regardless of the bank account that it has spent only on what I uh, designated it to be. So um, the the city already has a responsibility to hold money in trust if it's made out donations are, so.
That would have been my thought too, but it's it sounds as though that's more complicated than that.
Patricia, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Yes, um, to answer um, the previous question and also to recognize what Councilmember Kurzweil said, if a designated donation is made and the donor specifically designates that it must go to the Veterans Memorial Fund, then those funds must be used. And if they aren't used in that current fiscal year, then in theory, they would roll over in the general fund to be used towards the Veterans Memorial. But if it's a generalized donation that isn't specifically designated, then it could potentially just roll into the general fund and not go towards.
Well, that's an.
So that causes confusion, but.
Yeah. That's an easy, easy way to define that money, though, so.
If it's designated.
Thank you, Patricia, for helping with that clarification. Um, does anyone else have anything on the budget this evening? Okay, great. We're going to move on to the manager's report. City Manager Zolnik, go ahead.
Couple items. One, we had the farmer's market open this past weekend. It was very successful. Everyone seemed to be following the requirements and um, practicing social distancing went very well. At our next meeting, we have our, on the agenda, the Oakland County Investment Program. Oakland County Treasurer Andy Meiser will be in attendance via Zoom. His staff is going to discuss the investment program and other county initiatives. Uh, the Trailway Project is moving forward. That is going to be during the week of June twenty-second through the twenty-sixth. That will be the area that was discussed and approved last meeting from south of eleven mile to the area that is right near the Knowles. And the Fire Chief did mention regarding the DTE Plan power outage that is actually going to take place on Wednesday, the tenth at approximately nine AM. And that's all I have for right now.
Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead. Councilmember Kibble, I'll come to you next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Paul, I wanted to just um, ask a little bit about the cemetery. I know that the DPW is just overstretched right now. I mean, I I get it. Um, and apparently there's been some Facebook comments about the uh, look of the cemetery. And is there any way we can find a solution? Uh, is there any way that we can hire one of our local lawn cutting companies to just come in for the month of June and maintain that cemetery until the cemetery workers do come back?
The cemetery workers did start back today, was their first day. So they're back doing and what they've wanted to come back and do in the maintaining. We've got all the safety protocols in. And we're very anxious to come back. So we do have them on split schedules where they're going to be working. And uh, I know a lot of people are excited to have them back.
Yes, they are. It's uh, they're taking a beating on Facebook, so um, I'm glad to hear that. And hopefully, somebody can post on Facebook that's a Facebook user uh, about the cemetery is now in the process of being taken care of. Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Kibble, then I'm coming to you, Councilmember Kennedy.
I had uh, three things I was hoping to get a little bit of insight on. Uh, have you heard, Paul, have you heard of the MEDC grants that had been made available?
Which which grants are you speaking of?
Quite honestly, I thought that they were supposed to have been some type of parallel to the match funds that had come from Main Street Oakland County.
There was a MEDC grant that was made available to the state, but that was only allowable for redevelopment-ready communities. And the South Line is not one of those communities, so we were ineligible to receive those funds.
Okay, good, good to hear. So um, spring cleanup, is there some sense that we're going to take a crack at trying to get volunteers to, you know, mulch the flower beds and down in the park and all that kind of stuff? I know that it's later than what it typically would be, but I I still have a great deal of interest in trying to pitch in if if somebody needs a hand with stuff.
We have not initiated anything like that at all. I know we've had some individuals that want to do some maintenance on a couple of the parks. Uh, if you're interested in doing something or getting a group, obviously, it's it's very difficult to say, let's get, let's gather a group of people together to try to do some sort of activity where you can limit the number of people or try to limit at least the potential or still practice social distancing. So we really haven't gotten into that. But that just hasn't been on the radar. I mean, it's kind of like, it's kind of like the garage sales. The garage sales, people still want to have them. They're allowed to have them. They're allowed to get those particular permits now that certain things have been released uh, by the governor. But that has, that's not been one of the things that have been uh, that's been on the radar.
Well, I I was thinking if there were some way to coordinate perhaps with DPW where mulch could end up being dropped off at some of the entrance signs, say. And, you know, then we can end up manning those and take care of it. I mean, I've I've done that myself, and I don't need a bunch of people with me. I just need the stuff to show up without having to haul everything out there. That's all.
Well, if you are definitely interested in doing that, or anybody else is, then we will, we will do that. We have not.
All right, I'll get with you then.
Okay, we can do that.
Um, and I wondered, had you discerned anything about the U-Haul's parked at Peters?
Uh, yes, our ordinance officer was working on a letter. I'm not sure if that's already been sent out or not, but I know he is working with our planner regarding that.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Kennedy, you had something?
I did. Uh, just for Councilmember Kurzweil's benefit, uh, that notification on Facebook went out earlier today uh, after discussions with Paul and Doug. So uh, the community's been advised that they members of the cemetery crew have come back, will probably maybe end up working split shifts to minimize exposure to one another and diligently be working to get the cemetery back in shape. Uh, the other thing, Paul, is looking at the map for the area on the trail that's going to be reasphalted, that's quite a change from what was originally proposed. So the question I have is, is that area that you've added really in that bad a shape? And if it was, why wasn't it included in the first place? Uh, I'm a little leery. I haven't been out on that section in particular. Maybe uh, Councilmember Dilg or Councilmember Kibble have. Uh, I'm concerned that uh, we're putting new asphalt over the top of pretty good asphalt as opposed to looking at other areas on the trail where there is poor asphalt that needs to be addressed. And we're taking the path of least resistance because we happen to be in the neighborhood. Can you assure us that that asphalt that's being addressed in that entire length all needs to be addressed?
Yes, it will need to be addressed, whether it needs to be addressed right away or not. We are trying to accommodate a. or not, we are trying to accommodate economies of scale, is that all the worst asphalt in the whole city, absolutely not, we had identified originally, the section was about 600 or 800 feet long by DPW, that was analyzed probably a year and a half ago after I had started for an area that needed to be repaired, we went out to the other areas and found out numerous locations along that segment north to 11 Mile that we should repair along with what's been done to repair that whole section, is that the worst in the whole city, absolutely not, this first section was the 600 or 800 feet that we thought, and the original estimate was approximately that much that was done and that was given to me, and that's why that was put in the budget, it does not mean that we can't still move forward and identify more sections of the city that need, that would need to be done, this section of pathway is being done, this is the best way of accomplishing it, so we don't wait and come back two years ago and drive over certain small segments of pavement with new, with new asphalt and redo it.
Okay, so, again, you know, what I'm hearing you say, and maybe I'm misinterpreting it, is I'm spending money putting down asphalt when there's still overall useful life in part of that trail, now, I've spoken to other councilmembers and asked everybody to provide the superintendent of utilities with their evaluation, because everybody's out on the trail and looking at different areas within the city, where the other areas are, so that he didn't have to go out and actually do the inspection himself, my question is, when you tell me we're spending money fixing areas that aren't so bad without addressing areas that are bad, why are we doing that, and I don't want to hear the economies of scale comment necessarily, because again, we're in the neighborhood. Okay, we're putting money down over the top of asphalt that still has useful life available as opposed to fixing areas that truly need it.
The areas that we are repairing north of the area are areas that need to be repaired, there are certain segments that may be 50 feet long or 100 feet long, 10 feet long, 25 feet long in that whole area, instead of doing small patches along that whole section, we are repaving that whole area to extend the useful life, if a segment of pavement is bad within the city, we will extend the useful life of that pavement even though it may not be in extremely bad condition because it is within the same, is within the same area, it does not mean that we will not look at, and I don't expect any councilmembers to go out there to go and evaluate pavement through the city, we will do that, and we are looking at additional segments that we will do, I appreciate people mentioning, hey, we saw this patched up area and other locations, the city needs to identify and do a systematic approach in paving segments of, repaving segments of the pathway that were done around the same time, because what we do not want to do is to do 800 feet of pathway and small segments and then come back two years later over the brand-new segment of pavement that we did, damage that, and then rehave to do it, so this is one small segment that we are doing, and we will continue to identify other segments throughout the city, so maybe I didn't answer it completely correctly, and you may still be satisfied with my, with my answer, but it's not just economies of scale, it's trying to look at what areas need to be replaced, and I went out there with staff to look at those areas.
Councilmember Kennedy, your follow-up, can wait just a moment, councilmember Dilg, you've been extremely patient, please go ahead.
I would say that I am not an expert, first of all, and no, I don't think anyone else on council is, so I would think that we would want to have our experts do the evaluating, however, as a layperson who's on the trail every day, I was thrilled to see the, that section getting done, that is, I'm on it all the time, and that is one of the worst sections, we are not putting good asphalt on pretty good asphalt, there are like actual holes in the asphalt, so I can't, I disagree that that is a bad way to do it, I think it's a, I think it's a good plan, but again, I'm not an expert, that's all.
Kennedy, go ahead with your follow-up.
The follow-up question gets back to the discussion we had, Paul, regarding the part of the root cause of what caused the issue with that section of rail in the first place, we talked about the ruts caused by trucks driving on that pavement, my question to you was, whose trucks, your response was, our trucks, we did it to ourselves, we drive the heavy road trucks down that pavement to plow the snow or whatever, and my question was, do we need to change the process instead of using the heavy street trucks there to use the John Deere, you know, with the small blade on it, like they use on the other parts of the trail where they don't have easy access from a main road, you were going to discuss that with the superintendent of utilities, has that directive come down so that once we lay down all the fresh asphalt, we don't exacerbate its demise and shorten its useful life?
Yes, I've had that conversation with the DPW director.
Is it going into effect then?
Yes, I advised him that what we had talked about, that we would not be maintaining that with the heavy trucks, and he did advise me that that would not take place.
Great, okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Thank you, Paul, for everything you're doing, I know it's been a long winter, and, you know, we're trying to catch up on a lot of things that haven't been done in the city, including the bike pass, so thank you for everything you're doing, my question is, is I am working in Paul Baker Park, so I, hopefully, I'll have it done within the next week or so, and can I get flowers, can I go to Donahue and order the flowers for Paul Baker Park?
And we can assist through that to ensure what you're getting and pay to make sure that we are not paying for sales tax for something like that also.
Yeah, I mean, if I, do I have your authority to go and pick out the colors for the, for that park?
I don't have a problem with doing that, just like I didn't have a problem with another councilmember spreading mulch or anything like that, if you guys are willing to volunteer, we are definitely willing to work with you to do that just like we did last year.
So, so I've got your permission to contact Donahue tomorrow, identify him with the city, tell them what I need.
And I would say, obviously, we'll talk with Patricia regarding the dollar amount, because obviously, it's just not like an open-ended dollar amount, and I'm sure that's not what you were thinking, but that's just nothing we need to get across.
Yeah, it's just seven more baskets, that's all, I just need seven more, thank you.
Anyone else with anything for Paul this evening?
Yes.
All right, with that, we will open up our second public comment this evening, please remember to state your name and address, it does not look as if we have any, can you confirm that for me, city clerk Eaton?
Nobody has raised their hand.
I'll give it just a few more, just in case.
Okay. And we do only have one person on the phone.
Okay. At this time, we will close public comment for the evening, we'll move on to our council comments, and I'll have councilmember Walton kick us off this evening.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, I just have a couple of things tonight, unfortunately, I was out of town over the weekend, so I did not make it to any of the rallies and, or the market that we had, but I did hear fabulous reviews on all of them, so I want to thank all of our chiefs and all the residents of South Lion that did come out and handle that, I also want to thank Irwin's Orchard for donating money to buy all new flags for downtown South Lion, those should be here before July 4th, and we'll just really be looking sharp downtown, and also shout out to Judy Keeling and Dana Johnston for planting new flowers up at the Veterans Monument using money donated by the American Legion, and I also want to thank Lori Moser for her donation of part of her sales from the farmer's market for the Veterans Memorial and just boosting that up, so shout out to all those people, fabulous people, and you guys have a great night, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Walton, councilmember Dilg?
Am I on mute, no, I'm not, okay, just a couple things, I unfortunately had nowhere to go this weekend, so I was here, I, I was at the farmer's market for the whole day, it was awesome, I just wanted to say how much I appreciated the vendors and all the work that they could do to make sure people were safe and kept, kept a distance and kept their masks on, it was a very tough day, all day long in the sun to wear masks, and I really appreciated all the vendors doing that and almost, almost everybody at the market, it was, it was an excellent day, and people were thrilled to be back, and then just, I know we've talked a lot about the marches and the rallies, I thank the police, but I also want to thank the organizers of those, the participants, and even those who don't support protests, it was, I thought it was very non-confrontational, there was only a few people who were a little bit out of hand, but otherwise, what could have been a very contentious situation was handled well by everybody, I thought, our restaurants are coming back, everybody's making their announcements on what their rules are on Facebook, and they're putting them on, up on their doors, I'm just asking that people please be patient with the new rules, this is new to everybody, the owners are trying their best, and let's go in there with positive attitudes, try to eat local, if you do feel like eating in or eating on their decks, I know that they would really appreciate it. And the final thing that we were saying about the trail, unbelievable feedback and support, thrilled that we are getting some, some of that trail redone, people are really happy about it, I think it's a big win and makes us look pretty good, so, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Dilg, councilmember Richards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to follow up on councilmember Dilg's comment about the farmer's market, I went there for about 30 minutes and walked through it, and I was amazed that it had that big a turnout, it was really nice, and I wound up buying two tomatoes, which I hope to get them to live and plant them in the garden here, and I was quite favorably impressed with the whole thing, to move on, I want to get to the past comments about the trail up there, on Friday, the 5th, I doned my orange blazer for two and a half or three hours, and the trail up there was one of the first places I went, and I went all the way to the end, and I had talked to Ron Brock earlier in the day about some of the specific things along there, which I was familiar with, okay, some I was not, the approach on the very end of the trail that touches 11 Mile, Oakland County mandates that it be done in cement, you cannot do that again in asphalt, and they will probably, the city will probably wind up doing that on their own, so he indicated, at a later time, I have to agree with councilman Kennedy, he's right, but I have to agree with Paul, and he's right, and in inspecting the trail, I've been on there a lot of times myself, there's six cross drains through that stretch that are underground, four or six-inch pipe, PVC probably, you can't see them, but I know where they're at, you can tell by the break in the, in the top of the pavement and the vegetation growth, anyway, with a, with a deal like that, huh, you can't, you're not just going over the top, but you're regrinding the asphalt that's there and putting down, adding asphalt and liquid and putting down new and straightening it out, and you just can't piecemeal it, and if we, if and when we do some other areas which are desperately in need of repaving, okay, we can find the money if we're dedicated to do so, and further down the, down the way, in back of Hornet Concrete, across from Walker's Garage down there, it's pretty bad, those will have to be in a different, different format, different time, anyway, it's got to be done this way, you just can't piecemeal it, it won't, it won't work effectively, it'll be a second rate job, anyway, moving on, I visited the 318 Lake Street site several times over several days when they were demolishing the building, I took pictures, I was amazed at how fast they worked with different sections, and they separated the iron girders and beams and did them differently, on the third day, the excavators hit what appeared to be an old hand-dug well that was below grade level of a basement that was a previous dwelling on the property, okay, before the library was built, which I don't remember that, but it was definitely what they were hitting, and I commented with the fellas, is this what you'd call virgin ground, and they said definitely, the top soil is three and a half to four feet thick, that's correct, three and a half to four feet thick, no wonder the trees go so big and tall on that end of town, and definitely virgin ground, but they're having, they're having great success getting it out of there, the pictures were amazing, moving on down, next item, the historical commission last, met last week Wednesday, and we all observed social distancing in the meeting, and Larry Ledbetter informed us that he is talking with the Tube Mill representatives about reviving the creek cleanup sometime in July or possibly August, but we'll have a lot of mosquitoes by then, which we don't have at an earlier time of the year, in April, anyway, it's in the talking stages. Finally, in the survey that we approved for Pipe, Pipe Tech, when they do their survey, they will encounter that drain that I mentioned last, last council meeting, that's across from Walker's Garage, it goes in the back of the old Tepco building, which is now Gary Manelis Building for machining, and that, I looked at it, I've looked at it before, that ground is, and water is very polluted, the grass won't grow there, weeds won't grow there, it's polluted, and I'm hoping I can put an Eagle Scout project together with Larry to clean that out a little bit before Pipe Tech gets in there to recommend opening that up, because that's the oldest drain in the community, and it needs help, it needs to be touched up, it's all just scum, and it goes underneath Walker's, the pavement over to Walker's Garage.
Richards, I'm going to need to ask you to wrap this up, please.
Okay, that's it, that was my last comment, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, you know, it's been, I think, somebody said at one time, may you live in interesting times, and, and boy, there's a lot to that, I would really like to thank the residents of the state of Michigan, everyone in every city that had a protest regarding the events of the past couple of weeks, I lived in Minnesota, I lived in the Minneapolis-St. Paul area for a year, and my heart is aching for everyone in that city, but in Michigan, we were different, in Michigan, I think, including the residents of South Lion, that we were role models to the country and to the global audience, that protest for social change can be peaceful and it can be nonviolent, the peaceful and nonviolent protests that were carried on here in South Lion, I believe, carried the message of the moment, it made us all stand back and reflect, those moments were unscarred, they were uninterrupted by distractions of arson and looting and rioting, further murder, lawlessness, and anarchy, the message came through clear, the way it should, in peaceful and nonviolent protest, tonight and tomorrow and probably the next couple of weeks, I'm going to be in thoughtful reflection of the events that have occurred, going to be in thoughtful reflection of those that lost their lives in Minneapolis, George Floyd, the innocent bystanders in California, law enforcement, including the St. Louis retired police chief David Dorn, all life is precious, and we as a culture, as a people, have to learn to respect and preserve life, so the next time you take a knee in protest and exercise your First Amendment, bend the other knee in prayer and pray for those that lost their lives and pray for those that need to recover and heal, and pray for your country, good night, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Kurzweil, councilmember Kennedy?
Tonight, I just want to let everyone know that the Salem-South Lion District Library reopened today in a limited capacity, is directed by executive. in a limited capacity, as directed by Executive Order 2020-110 and 2020-97. In an effort to keep their staff and their patrons safe, they will be offering a contactless curbside delivery service at the library. Unfortunately, the building will continue to be closed to the public until further notice. So if you finished reading all the books you had at home over the past 90 days, you can now get a fresh supply from the library. And just as a note, as we see more and more businesses gradually reopening, I would encourage everyone to respect and follow the rules established by those businesses. Those rules have been put in place to protect their employees as well as their customers. There isn't one establishment that I know of that wouldn't like to conduct business like they did four months ago. If we all act prudently, we'll get to that point sooner rather than later. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy, and Councilmember Kibble.
I would just like to give notice to any business that's kind of contemplating opening and needs a little guidance. Chief Vogel and the fire inspector are going to end up being great, great helps for trying to make sure that you're compliant to everything that you need to end up attending to, so I, I'd implore you to reach out to them so that you're, you're working in confidence. I, I was really excited to see the asphalt, the rough course on Dixboro between 8 and 9 is all up and, and set, curbing's in, and that's going to be really exciting to, to not have, like, I'm sure those people that live on that street are thinking mud is no more, so that'll be very exciting for them. And Langen's property is really moving along, I saw that they made connection from Charleston Place, so that, that's really popping forward, so that'd be another, one more nice economic development there, so. To speak to the, the event yesterday, that memorial, that was, that was really touching, it was really nice to be amongst people that really care about humanity. And, and I, I think that it's a given that real change and real steps forward, trying to take some of the edges off of things and, and training that can be meaningful, not lessen the security of the nation, just being more mindful that not everything is, you know, you're not a hammer and everything's a nail, so I'm looking forward to to all these departments finding out that we can still be very good at what we do and not have to be hardened necessarily to be able to accomplish what we're, we're in charge of, so I think that this is going to end up being a very, very helpful thing for our nation in the very near future. Everyone will end up gaining benefit from the loss of some people that end up seeing the wrong way that things are done, so. That's all I had, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble, and I'll keep this brief too, a lot of you guys have covered a lot of the things that really, I mean, what can you say? You got to be proud of the community. You know, that starts with the residents, the city staff continues across the board, you know, to pick up everyone as a team effort as we try to navigate multiple challenging things going on, not just, you know, in our community but across the country. So, you know, over the weekend, obviously, just very proud of the community and everyone that came out and participated in a, in a safe, in calm matter. I hope everyone took a moment on Saturday, one of my favorite days of the year, you know, one of those days where you're a little more, little extra proud to be an American, as we honored the 76th anniversary of the Normandy Invasion, changing the world. And so, you know, that, just a, just a very proud weekend and continue to be proud of the community as a whole. I did get to have some fun last week in joining our second graders from Salem Elementary, not like we normally get to, and get to see everyone in the classrooms, and they get to ask me funny questions, like if I took a helicopter there. It was, you know, we made the most out of it, I got to show them, you know, our dog at the house, and the kids really liked that, a lot of the kids wrote about getting a chance to meet our dog, and so, you know, one last thing I will leave us with is, you know, we're all dealing with this, you know, in different manners, so even just tonight, when we're in the meetings and stuff, let's try to be patient with folks, let's try to continue to work together with each other, because you don't know what other people are dealing with, you don't know what's kind of weighing on folks, and so, you know, just that extra ounce of effort and niceness can go a long way, so. With that, let's, let's look for a motion to end this meeting, so Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Thank you, move to adjourn.
Okay.
Thank you, folks, everyone have a great night.
Thank you.